It is. I mean, how do you make, you know, that real decision?
Didn't you just say your last time when he asked you about that and said we'll wait for the exhibits?
Did you, did you, it contacted you?
It is 5:31. We will go ahead and call the January 7th, 2014 meeting of the City Council to order if you would rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the row?
Alderman Edward.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lesko.
Alderman Canman.
Here.
Alderman Joe.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Dove.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Mayor Dabla. Oh, my God, I'm sorry.
Wow.
Mayor Houston, I apologize.
Here.
Before we get into the meeting, I would like to announce to the members of the council that Herb Smith's wife passed away today. So Joan was a person that I think we all knew and loved. I mean, she was very, very supportive of Herb and all the time that he had served the community in terms of his various offices, including the long time services as an alderman here with the city of Springfield. And if you'd just rise with me and we'll just do a moment of silence in her memory. Would also like to take the opportunity before we start the meeting to thank our Public Works Department Director Mahoney for the job they did in some extremely harsh conditions. But, you know, it's easy to see what's happening on the streets, but we've got police officers, we've got firefighters, we've got all the members of CWLP that are out in the cold and really have worked very hard over the last few days, given the weather conditions that we're in. And I really just want to take the opportunity to thank everybody for the services they are providing to the people of the city of Springfield because it has really been very, very harsh in terms of those individuals that have to be outside.
Second those comments, Mayor.
The Chair want entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Chair want entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the December 17th, 2013 City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair want entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chair want entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for passage. Discussion. There are no discussion. All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. Agenda numbers 2011-104, 2012-123, 2012-226, 2012-376, 2013-128, 2013-174, 2013-193, 2013-250, 2013-260, 2013-266, 2013-376, 2013-397, 2013-455, 2013-457, 2013-469, and 2013-470 remain tabled or in committee. The next item on the agenda is document number 2013-475, an ordinance approving the appointment of J. Todd Greenberg as Corporation Council. Chair want entertain a motion to place agenda number 2013-475 on final passage.
I'd like, Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to let this be held in committee. There were, there were several questions that were asked of Mr. Greenberg, and I know that he's been, he's on vacation on a cruise and hasn't been available. So if we could just hold it in committee until he returns.
Okay. Your motion, second.
Because I think he needs to be here for us when we do it one way or the other.
Okay. Further discussion? There are no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion to table say aye.
Aye.
Return to committee.
Leave in committee.
Vote yes, those opposed vote no. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is document number 2013-477, an ordinance providing for and authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds, series 2014, for the city of Springfield, San Juan County, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $80 million for the purpose of financing infrastructure improvements within the city and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in an amount not to exceed $650,000. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2013-477 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage. Discussion?
Discussion.
Alderman Simpson.
You sent out an email, kind of explaining the several year period for this. Can you explain?
Basically, as we have implemented the half percent sales tax that was effective on January 1 of this year, what our plan is, is to do approximately $86.7 million worth of bonds over a three-year period. The initial period for 2014 is we anticipate that we will be spending somewhere in the area of about $27 or $28 million, and that we will go ahead and issue those bonds this month. Then, as we go into our second year, we will come back to the City Council with another ordinance to go ahead and authorize the issuance of the bonds. The authorization in terms of the ordinance is good for a six-month period.
But Mayor, is it correct that, under this ordinance, your administration could actually sell all the bonds?
We could, we could sell up to $80 million of bonds. Our intent is, like I say, to do somewhere in the area of about $27 or $28. The only way that we would think in terms of doing more would be if suddenly the bond market changed, or the federal government decided to do away with the exemption of, tax exemption for municipalities.
There's a particularly very low interest rate that we don't think, that we think is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, something like that.
And we don't seriously think that anything's going to change in, in that period of time. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Director McCarty has answered several of the questions I posed last week, including who is the underwriter, and the answer was it's Chase Bank. A week ago, I also asked for a breakdown of the fees relative to the issuance of these bonds, this first series of bonds, and the answer I received, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director McCarty, is that basically we can spend up to the $600,000, I believe it's $650,000 in fees, but we are, we're not sure how much of that will be spent. And then there's, I guess, the premise behind that answer is that somehow we'd be limited for the future series that would be issued in future fiscal years to that same cap, but I don't see the ordinance really stating that. Can you address that situation?
Sure, sure. The list that I sent you is the potential cost of all the different fees, and I sent you the breakdown of that. Most of the fees are tied to the size of the issuance. For instance, our under, or our council, our bond council, those fees are tied to the size of the issuance. If we issue under $30 million this year, then the bond council fee for the city of Springfield, for our bond council, will be somewhere in the neighborhood, I believe it's $22,000 to $23,000. If we issue the entire amount, the total fee would be closer to, I believe, $67,500 is the limit that was passed in the ordinance by this council in October. Most of the fees are tied to that, the underwriters' discount, et cetera. The only fee that is fixed is for our financial advisor, and that fee is fixed at $56,000, I believe it is, whether we do one issue or we do three issues. So because we don't know how much we're going to issue, we think it's $27 and $28 million, as the mayor has indicated, but could potentially be up to $80 million, it's very difficult for us to isolate the total amount or final cost of the fees. That's why we've got the worst-case scenario here under the premise that we would issue all of the bonds. I do not anticipate doing that, and I do not anticipate spending $650,000 in fees, but we have to have the supplemental in place in case that does occur.
All right. Do we have a contract that sets forth how we will calculate the fees depending on the size of the first issuance of bonds?
We have two ordinances.
With, with the underwriter bank, with, with Chase Bank?
Well, it's a typical discount off the size of the issuance, and I don't know off the top of my head what the discount is, but certainly the bigger the issuance, the larger the fee will be.
Do we have a contract with Chase Bank setting forth what the discount will be based on whatever facts and circumstances exist at the time the first series is issued?
The only thing that we have with JP Morgan Chase is what is in the bond ordinance, and that we're utilizing him as the underwriter. I don't recall off the top of my head if I have a set percentage, but I will speak to them and with the financial advisor. That was all, it's part of our discussions, but quite honestly, we've had so many discussions in the last two months, I don't recall that right now.
Do we have a written contract with Chase Bank, the underwriter?
No.
Well, how do you propose to issue these bonds when we don't have a contract with the underwriter?
We have an agreement with them, we've been working with them, it's all part of this bond ordinance that we're utilizing JP Morgan Chase.
But this, our city code requires-
This is the way that we've always done it. This is not anything that's abnormal.
Wait a minute. Our, our code requires that contracts over a certain dollar amount be approved by the City Council. And we're authorizing spending here, but we don't yet have a contract that will obligate the city. And this council is, has the responsibility to approve contracts which obligate the city. And you're describing a situation where we will become obligated to the underwriter, Chase Bank, but we don't have a written contract.
Should you approve the bond ordinance? Yes.
I think there's two different situations here. There's approval to spend money, and there's a contract that has not been brought to the City Council for the underwriter.
I have a question, Mayor. To Director McCarty, is the intent of the administration then to, at some point, when a contract is agreed to by the city and the underwriter, to bring that back to the City Council for approval?
We, we have an agreement in principle with JP Morgan. What we don't know is a definitive amount on what the costs are going to be. That is included in our estimates of the fees of the $650,000. The breakdown that I sent that you and Alderman McMiniman last year is in there. The underwriting discount estimate is around $300,000 should we do the entire issuance, which we don't anticipate doing.
I apologize for referring to Chase Bank. It's with JP Morgan as the underwriter, so I correct my statements as far as that's concerned, but I'm concerned about how we're doing this bond issuance without a written contract with JP Morgan, the underwriter, that will set forth the fees. If, if we approve this tonight, it looks like you've got, the city is subject to an uncertain situation as to what the fees will be.
Well, we know they won't exceed $650,000 on an $80 million issuance. Alderman Canman.
Thank you. So there's a, you said there is a written agreement that exists between the city and the Chase, but just some of the blanks, some of the parts of it are blank because we don't know the amount of the bonds that are going to be sold. Is that correct?
Right. We can't, we can't bring a contract necessarily forward with a specific dollar amount, plus we've just been following the protocol that's been utilized in previous GO bond issuances.
Well, in brief.
We have, we have agreements that have been brought before the council for the underwriters' council, we have, or for the bond council for the city, we have agreements for our financial advisor, which were brought before the council. But in the past, there hasn't been a separate agreement with the actual underwriter. It's been part of the bond ordinance.
So, but at some point, is it, you said there is some kind of written agreement that exists, or quasi-
We've had discussions, we've had emails, we've had multitudes of meetings. I don't recall off the top of my head. I believe, well, I will tell you this, we did do an RFP, and part of the RFP, and maybe that will answer your questions and concerns, part of the RFP was a response on what they would be charging.
So is it, is it the intent of the administration to not enter into any formal contract or agreement with Chase, to just to have these, you know, back and forths of the emails and the letters?
We're memorializing that relationship with the bond ordinance that's before you today, but if you're worried about having something in writing as to the amount of the fees, then we can simply provide the RFP data to you if that is what you would like.
Well, I don't think that provides that, because an RFP is just a request for a proposal. It's not what the agreement is. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how is it going to be determined? Is there some formula that you've agreed to with JP Morgan?
Yes, there's a formula, there's a formula in the RFP, Alderman.
Okay, and that says how much the fee that will be paid to the underwriter based on the amount of the bonds that are sold?
Yes, yes, but again, it comes down to how much do we issue is.
Right, I, I understand that. And with the bond council, is the bond council's fee also dependent on the amount of the bonds that are issued?
Yes, and that was in the ordinance.
Right. I was just wondering, it seems to me like if we're going to issue $80 million worth of bonds, and then you issue, say, $20 or $30 million initially, and then another $30 million, then, then another 20, or whatever it is, that the work of the bond council would be, most of the work would be done in the first issuance of bonds, and then when you do the second or third one, it would pretty much be just cutting and pasting, or something like that. Is that, would you agree with that?
I'm not bond council, so I don't really know how much work's involved. I just know that when we went out for proposals, that we received proposals from several different councils, and they were all somewhat in the name, in the same ballpark. One was a little higher than the others. We ended up going with the local proposal.
Okay.
And when we were, and when we asked for proposals, we asked for them to provide, whether it was one issue, or whether it was on a pro-rata basis, if there's multiple issues.
Typically, in terms of the bond council, one of the things that they are doing is certifying the tax-exempt status of the bonds. Therefore, they're taking on the liability, and that's part of what they're charging you for.
So all the, all the bids we got from all bond councils were all, their fees were all based on the amount of bonds that were sold?
Yes. Typically, the more bonds you sell, as the mayor just indicated, if you're taking on that liability, the more bonds you sell, the more, the higher your potential liability.
Is there a discount as you go higher, whereas, you know, if you, if you sell 40 million, or, or as opposed to 80 million, 80 million isn't double the fee of 40 million?
I don't recall. This was back in October, September, October timeframe, but I believe the higher it went, certainly, it was a tiered system, so that the higher you got, it went down a little bit as you got into the, the subsequent tiers. But I just know off the top of my head that the, the bond council we have, the ordinance was for not to exceed of 67,500, I believe, and then with our financial advisor, it was $56,000 fixed fee, whether we do one or we do three, or four, or five.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify. We've got three different relationships here that the city is, is involved with. You've got the bond council, and we passed an ordinance for the bond council. We've also got the underwriter, and that's what we don't have a contract for. We've also got the underwriters' council, and as I understand from Director McCarty, the underwriter's attorney was selected by the underwriter, which is common practice. And so our main relationship, contractual relationship, is, is the city and the, and the underwriter, and that's where we don't have a, a written agreement that I can see anywhere. So I'm going to vote present if this comes for a vote tonight, but I think we need some clarification on this. And also, I'm concerned that if we have future issuances of a series of bonds down the road, it's likely that at least one of these issuances will take place under potentially a different mayor and a potential, potentially different finance director, and there's a certain amount of ambiguity here with, with regard to what we're doing. How much, with regard to future series of issuances of bonds, how much in fees will we have remaining to pay in relation to what we've already paid with the first issuance? It's all, from, from what I can see, it's our, the contractual obligation of the city is unclear and unspecified, so that's why I'll be voting present if this comes to a vote.
Alderman Simpson.
Was the selection of JP Morgan based on a combination, including fees?
Yes, that was part of it.
And were their fees, were their fees in line with or higher than?
They were, I want to say, second or third lowest.
They were also someone who was willing to do the pre-sale in Springfield in terms of doing the sale of the, before it goes to the open market.
And that was part of the RFP?
Yes.
The, in terms of the-
I believe that it was, and I would be happy to send the results of the RFP to the council if there's a wish to do so, but all of that information is there.
Mayor, we got a question for Director McCarty. If JP was the second or third lowest, who was the lowest, and why didn't we go with the lowest?
That was months ago, and it was based on a recommendation from our financial advisor. There's a variety of factors that were involved. Again, it wasn't done as a bid, it was done as a request for proposal, and at the end of the day, there's that clause in what we determined to be in the best interest of the city, and it was determined that going with JPM in this particular case was in the best interest of the city. So it wasn't just on price alone, there were other factors, and I, again, this was months ago, I can't recall everything that was involved, but I can certainly send you our financial advisor's recommendation of going with JP Morgan if you wish.
Okay, I'd like to see that, but do you know what the difference in dollars was between JP and the-
I don't think it was much. I don't think it was much. Again, we're talking about, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars in an $80 million issuance. On a percentage basis, it was negligible.
Alderman Simpson.
Just one final question. Were all of the entities about the same size in terms of assets, bank?
They were all margin entities, yeah. You had Citibank, JP Morgan, I think Bank of America, Merrill Lynch was one of them. It was your, it was your bigger groups that could handle something like this.
Thank you.
No problem.
Further discussion? Again, this is just a standard approach that's been used in, in the past, and it's, it's no different than, than anything that's been done before, that's anything in common. Further discussion? There are no discussion. All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes nine yes with one voting present. The next item on the agenda is document number 2013-484, an ordinance accepting bid and authorizing execution of contract UE 14-10-67, line clearance services for two-year term for the electric division with Nelson Tree Service Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $5 million for the Office of Public Utilities. The Chair want entertain a motion to place agenda number 2013-484 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Discussion, Mayor. I'd like to offer a floor amendment as follows. It'd be section five. City Water, Light &amp; Power shall provide a report to the City Council by February 1, 2014 regarding strategies City Water, Light &amp; Power might use to introduce greater participation by local contractors in the annual line clearing program.
Chair, a second?
Second.
So we moved and seconded. Discussion? There are no discussion. All those in favor of the, excuse me, Alderman Griffin?
I thought that the, the answer we had the other night was that we don't have anybody local that's big enough to do this.
This is a specialty market because this isn't just trimming trees. You have to be able to trim trees around high lines, I mean, around 69,138,12,500 volts. Our guys, these contractors go trim around trees so regular contractors can then go trim the trees from the area. So there's very few people that have this certification. So it's, it's limited on who can do this. That's why we have a few national firms that bid this. When we send it to local vendors, we've gotten no responses in the past.
Including this year?
Yeah, we didn't get any local responses at all.
Alderman Griffin, Mr. Mayor, this would not mandate us to use local contractors. It's just asking City Water, Light &amp; Power to help, to think about strategies that might allow local contractors to participate in the future.
Would, how much effort will that take for your office to provide that?
You know, we've already looked at the possibility of rather than doing a flat rate of bidding out circuits, which people, smaller contractors could bid on it. The response we've got from the vendors that, you know, they won't give us a better price to do smaller amounts, they want the whole piece, because they'll keep crews busy for the entire year versus sending somebody in to do a circuit for six weeks and then having to bid on individual areas. So we have already put that together, where we, we put together the idea of bidding out individual areas to be trimmed, that we expect to do in the next calendar year. To date, we have not issued a bid like that because we don't think it'll be cost-effective.
My, my concern is, is, you know, we've got, we already, we're getting into budget season, and we're going to have things coming to the different directors and the different finance people to be prepared for the budget, for the budget being passed in February. So the February 1st date concerns me because we already had to move one budget workshop from last night due to weather to next Monday. We've got CWLP coming up on the 16th, and, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with how the budget discussions go. So that, that's just my one concern, is that I don't want something that's going to take a lot of time and resources when we've got the budget coming right up in February.
Propose to amend the amendment?
Well, you know, Mayor?
Alderman Simpson.
You know, I think it's maybe one meeting. They're sitting, sitting down with your staff and having a discussion, and from that, that, that meeting, come up with some criteria. I don't think it's, it would be that difficult.
Alderman.
I'm just sitting here, listening to Chris. It seems to me that we're going to do the budget, and hopefully we won't pull this out of the budget like we've done in the past, but why vote on something that's going to be in the budget and then come back and say, well, you guys already passed this, so we put it in the budget? Why wouldn't you do that at the same time you're doing the budget and, and approve the budget and say, okay, we're approving $2.5 million for this budget? We could vote on this tonight and then trim it during the budget process. This is kind of, and I know what you're, you're doing, you're trying to get your ducks in a row so your people can keep going, but I thought it was a valid point when you said we're doing the budget hearing and the budget presentation, this is already going to be voted on, and we haven't even discussed the upcoming budget.
That's not unstandard. We do this a lot. I mean, we pass contracts to determine overall for next year, last year, because the lead time parts.
I know, Eric, but you're, you're two weeks away from giving your presentation where one time we said, you know what, we don't have the money, we're laying people off, we're asking for furlough times, we're, we're not going to do that. So all I'm looking at is if we approve this, you're going to sign a contract with Nelson Tree Service, and then we're going to get into the budget process, and something else may be discussed.
We, we can always pay them less.
I don't see a reason not to hold it for two weeks till you do your presentation.
No, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, I just want you to understand, we can always pay them less. If, if the tree trimming is a million dollars, that's all they're going to be awarded. They will not be guaranteed $2.5 million or $5 million.
This is just a not to exceed.
It's a not to exceed. So it'll be whatever our budget authority is, no more.
And actually, the budget that's been prepared does not have $2.5 million in it for tree trimming.
And we'll see that in a couple of weeks here.
I mean, I'll do whatever you want to do, but I just don't want that to be held out there as you voted on it, you said, let's go.
Yeah, no. It's not, because we're not even putting $2.5 million into the budget.
Okay, so if, if, if in the budget, it's an amount that doesn't come close to the $5 million, why, why is this $5 million amount in here? Why isn't the amount that's going to be in the budget in here?
Well, this was put together, this is what we would like to do, is $2.5 million a year. It's, this $5 million is over two years. We think that's an appropriate amount. And preparing this budget, we had to make cuts, and this is one of the areas we've cut, as we did in the past budgets. You know, if- You know, if we have the ability to have other savings, we may look at coming back and increasing that amount in the budget, but other than that, you know, the budget amount is going to be less than the $2.5 million. All you'll do is give us the authority to do that, and we can increase the budget amount if, through the available means. Tree trimming is a priority. All of our outages from the ice storm were tree-related.
I get that, but, you know, I'd have felt better if this amount was in your budget, because, you know, I agree with Alderman Edwards, you know, it's $5 million, but if it's not in your budget, you can always say, well, you know, you passed an ordinance, giving us the authority up to not to exceed $5 million. I just don't understand why you would have this, and then have a budget that doesn't, that doesn't, is half of this. It's troubling.
The budget, I mean, the $5 million is spread out over two years, two fiscal years.
But the budget is one?
Yeah, I understand, I mean, we do a lot of multi-year contracts, but that's, it's out.
Further discussion?
But the discussion was on the amendment, right?
That's correct.
There are no further discussion on the amendment, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Can we have a vote?
You can vote on your computers.
Vote on your machines. Those in favor vote yes, those opposed vote no. Okay, motion passes eight, two. Okay, further discussion on the amendment, or on the motion as amended? Hearing no further discussion on the motion as amended, all those in favor vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes ten, zero. The next item on the agenda is document number 2013-485, an ordinance accepting bid and authorize execution of contract UE 14-08-48, Unit 33 Precipitator Upgrade Project with Hayes PMCLC, in the amount not to exceed $1,344,900 for the electric division for the Office of Public Utilities. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2013-485 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes ten, zero. The Chair will entertain a motion to suspend rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2014-022, an ordinance approving automatic districts pursuant to the 2010 National Sentinel Census. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Discussion. Were there any changes made in the proposed boundary?
Anybody that wants to make changes can make changes. If you want to make floor amendments or amendments, you can, and there will be some coming forth.
So what was introduced is what was circulated roughly two years ago?
Last summer.
Last summer.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you want to make changes, make amendments, this was just to get the ball rolling.
I've got no changes.
And I apologize if I missed somebody and didn't tell them, there's no hidden agenda here, it's just to get the process going.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business to come before the City Council?
Yes, Mayor, I just like to point out that, you know, despite all the questions about the details of that bond ordinance, we shouldn't overlook the fact that this ordinance marks first time in recent memory that our city is raising the money that it'll take to make a serious and significant effort to fix our infrastructure, which we all know we have neglected for far too long, so I think that, you know, regardless of the details of the bond ordinance, it's something that we, we should really not overlook, and it's something that I look forward to, a lot of streets and sidewalks being fixed in my ward and all over the city over the next year.
Okay, is there any new business to come before the council?
Just to reiterate what we said earlier for the, for the public, we took the budget workshop from last evening due to inclement weather, we've moved it to next Monday, the 13th, at 5:30. It will be the treasurer, the clerk, the council, the library, and OPED. So other than the date, everything stays the same, so I just wanted to make sure the public was aware that that had been rescheduled.
Okay, we had-
Mr. Mayor, so we're meeting three days next week on-
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Thank you.
Okay. We had one person who has signed up to speak, is Mr. Earl Reese. Not, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.